Pastor Cass, could I ask you to start us off?
On this National Day of Prayer, we bow our heads. Eternal Lord, Father and Ruler of all, we pray for our leaders. Guide them by your Spirit. Give them a clear sense of purpose and direction. Bless them with wisdom. Give them strength to stand against pressure and to do the things they need to do. Lord God, you have blessed us in so many ways. Help us to remember your generosity and constantly to do the things you want us to do. Save us from violence and confusion, from pride and arrogance, from every evil. Give us wisdom to know what is wrong, and we ask, Lord, that with all the diversity in our community and our nation, we would be united in the things that really matter. Help us to work well not only with those with whom we are friends, but with those with whom we disagree. We lift up Mayor Jackson along with President Trump and Governor Pritzker. Give these individuals and others to whom we have entrusted the authority of government the spirit of wisdom, of knowledge, that there may be justice and peace in our land. As we look at continued challenges in our state government, we pray that our governor and legislators would work together and compromise for the good of the state. Be with all those affected by natural disasters, by the earthquake in the Philippines, the storms threatening India, flooding in Nebraska, and flooding even here in Glendale Heights. We pray that you would be with the leaders of Glendale Heights and help them to set the right priorities for our community. Help them to know what is right. Give them courage to do what is right and give them strength to continue in what is right. As the leaders of Glendale Heights meet this evening, bless them in all the decisions they make. Through Jesus Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much Pastor Cass. Bill, you want to start us up? Please.
Mayor, thank you. Jump into summer at the Sports Hub. Enjoy a day dedicated to summer at Hubbaloosa on Saturday, May 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Sports Hub. Swimming and diving at GH2O Aquatic Center, PATH Summer Camp, swim lessons, swim team, and youth athletics are just a few of the activities and programs you will be introduced to as you visit with the people that make it happen. Have fun participating in contests and races throughout the event. Meet staff and instructors to learn more about our programs. The day kicks off with free donuts and ends with a hot dog lunch and a free swim at the GH2O Aquatic Center from 12:30 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., with proof of attendance at Hubbaloosa and weather permitting. Call the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060 for more information. Are you thinking about spring projects at home? Before you start, be sure to contact the Community Development Department. Many projects require a permit, including things like new decks, sheds, patios, siding, and roofing. Call the Community Development Department to find out if your spring project requires a permit at (630) 260-6030. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) Join us this Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited through the month of May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on one specific day. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Mondays for the red zone, Tuesdays for the blue zone, Wednesdays for the green zone, and Fridays for the brown zone. To find your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on street sweeping programs, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Summer is just around the corner, and GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening up Memorial Day weekend on May 25th. Purchase your pool pass now until May 18th for discounted rates. Benefits to becoming a member include priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team reservations, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Mike.
Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2019/2020 Village Vehicle sticker now. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m. July 1st, 2019, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18, and trucks with B plates are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Vehicle ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding Village Vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. Spring yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday-scheduled pickup days by Republic Services. All yard waste must be placed in either biodegradable paper bags or in cans clearly labeled "Yard Waste Only." Biodegradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brush must be in bundles not exceeding four feet in length, two feet in diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family and multifamily residential units are required to utilize Republic Services for the collection and disposal of refuse. When placing your refuse and recycling totes outside for collection, containers are to be placed at the curbside immediately adjacent to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or recycling bins. Thank you.
Do you have more?
That's it.
Thank you, Marie.
Trustee Meritato.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
On Monday, May 27th, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving our country. The Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 will conduct a brief fallen warrior ceremony, followed by a wreath-laying ceremony. This includes a flag and color guard presentation, a rifle salute, and patriotic acknowledgement. In observation of Memorial Day, village offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th. For more information, please call (630) 909-5303. Glendale Lakes Golf Club Annual Spring Fling has been rescheduled for this Sunday, May 5th, with a noon shotgun start. The cost of playing this event is $300 per team or $75 per golfer. Golfers will receive 18 holes of golf with a cart, lunch, and a dinner, drink ticket, a raffle ticket, and a tee prize. There's only a few spots remaining, so be sure to make your reservation today by contacting -- excuse me. Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojek.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
National Police Week begins Sunday, May 12th, and runs through Saturday, May 18th. To commemorate this week, the Glendale Heights Police Department will be handling out blue ribbons for residents to put on their vehicles as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty and to show support to law enforcement officers protecting our streets. May 15th is National Police Officers Memorial Day, and we hope you fly the blue ribbons on that day as we honor those who have made their ultimate sacrifice while serving their communities. Blue ribbons.
Why did I have it on? Okay, next we have five proclamations. First one being a proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. Next is a proclamation to proclaim May 2nd, 2019, as National Day of Prayer. Then we have a proclamation to proclaim May 7th, 2019, as Cross and Guard Appreciation Day. Next is a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks Week. And last but not least is a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as National Police Week. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamations?
No objections.
Okay. Chester.
Mayor, I have one for Mother's Day brunch. Was that up there? No, it was up there before.
Right.
Glendale Lakes Golf Club is hosting their annual Mother's Day brunch on Sunday, May 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lunch will include carving and omelet station, various salads, breakfast and lunch entrees, children's items, and a sweets table. The cost is $30 for adults, $15.50 for children ages 5 through 12, and children 4 and under are free. Call today to make a reservation at (630) 260-0095. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. We now move on to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none. You had the consent agenda before you. Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. We now go to old business. Number one is an ordinance denying the application for a text amendment to Section 11-10B-3 entitled "Conditional Uses" of Article B entitled C2, Community Commercial District, of Chapter 10 entitled "Commercial Districts," of Title 11 entitled "Zoning Regulations" of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That is first reading. Yes, no?
Is it for -- Joanne, is that -- is that first reading?
Yes.
As a matter of old business? I thought we had first reading, and this was going to be tabled because the petitioner asked to move it to the next meeting.
Correct. He's out of the country.
He's away. So it would be appropriate to make a motion to table this to our next meeting, which would be on the 16th?
Trustee Schmidt.
I move that we table this ordinance until the next meeting at May 16th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This ordinance denying the application will be tabled until our next meeting. Number two is an ordinance to deny an application for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles on the premises commonly known as 325 East Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And I'm sure you want this tabled also?
That's correct, Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan.
A motion to table ordinance.
Go ahead, Joanne.
I apologize that there was some confusion. This is the proposal for the former Dominics. It's the Ramada owner who's out of country, who is -- that's in the new business.
Yep.
So it was the previous one, I do apologize.
Okay, this one doesn't get tabled.
It's already been tabled, but so we can just --
So the first one was Ramada?
Yes.
No, the first one was not Ramada. The first one was also the self-storage facility text amendment. Ramada is under new business.
So we want to now --
Untable it?
Somebody should move to reconsider the first item so we can put it back before the board.
Yeah, flipped it.
Sorry, I thought this was Ramada.
So you want?
Motion to reconsider. Item one.
Trustee Schmidt.
I move that we reconsider the item formally scheduled for tabling until May 16th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So this matter is back before the board. And just to be clear, this is the old Dominic -- is this the old Dominic store?
Correct, it's a self-storage on Army Trail Road.
Okay.
Yes.
And this order is -- pardon me?
Why is it in old business?
I'm not sure I know why it's on old business exactly, but it's been before.
Chen had suggested moving it down to five trucks.
Correct.
There was a suggestion by a board member that we reconsider it being -- that storage being put in the back, the trucks.
So what do you want to do with this?
We're -- it's before the board on a denial of that -- of the text amendment. And the following one is exactly the same item, which would -- is an ordinance to deny the conditional use. So these are companion matters. If you were to vote no, if you were to vote -- this is denying it. If you were to vote yes to deny it here, you'd vote yes again, is basically the position to deny the applicant the right to park these vehicles.
Or reconsider for it to be moved behind the building. Because right now he wants them in front. Correct, Joanne?
Correct.
So let me ask you a question. Who was the board member that wanted to put them in the back?
There was a suggestion by Trustee Schmidt who -- yes.
So it needs a motion to put it before the board. A motion.
To send it to the board?
No, no, a motion to approve the ordinance which denies the text amendment.
Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Chicken. Discussion. Trustee.
Sorry. Little quick question. Putting them in back, would it limit the amount of space for these trucks? I mean, be in a -- an unusual spot that would bother residents? So you mean close enough?
No, it's a fairly large parking lot behind the building, so we would recommend that they be limited to the row that's closest to the building if you choose to move forward that, and that would be a distance from the residents.
I don't think the fire department would like that. It's not that close.
Well, not up against -- that there's an aisle and then a row of parking spaces, and then another aisle, more parking, and then the property boundary. So I -- not up against the building, but the first row after the building. So there will be -- still be an intervening aisle that the fire district would have access.
Mayor.
Okay, I've got on that question.
Trustee Meritato.
Okay, that's not my district, but we got all kinds of townhomes pretty close to that back of that parking lot.
Can I speak to that? Yes, and they have been vocal, if you remember correctly, on Home Depot. We did clear that up with the hours that they were operating and opening, closing the garage, and taking deliveries. But yes, those residents back in the townhomes have been vocal in the past.
Trustee Pojek.
Joanne, if this should pass, if it should pass, I would suggest, highly suggest you have markers where these trucks are going to park, so they don't park anyplace. They got to go within the lines.
Trustee Sullivan.
Okay. First of all, we did not want the trucks, them to operate a rental truck, because Home Depot does that. Okay, so why would we then have them park them in the back and have them do that? If we're going to allow them to have the trucks parked in the back, just put them in the front. I mean, that is ridiculous.
Let's not put them nowhere.
Well, I'm just saying, if they, you know, if --
It is logical for -- and a lot of self-stores do have that since people are moving items. So it's not a --
And that's fine.
-- reasonable request. It's whatever the board wants to do in terms of having trucks at Home Depot as well as the self-storage.
Well, this will come up at the next board meeting, right?
We can table it again if you'd like.
If you would like me to do additional analysis and determine how many other self-storage facilities have outdoor storage, I -- then yes, tabling would be the logical move, and we're back to --
Which is where we started. But so, and a motion to table would take precedence over this, even though there's a motion to approve. If you motion to table, it's no discussion, and it's up or down vote.
If the majority don't want it, what do we got to table it for?
That's up to the board.
We have a motion on the floor right now.
Okay, what's the motion on the floor right now, Marie?
To deny.
Motion to reconsider.
Oh, we didn't even reconsider it yet.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider.
And there was no voice vote for that?
There was no voice vote.
Well, you should at least do that, so it's before you again. You should call at least a voice vote.
Can he just withdraw it?
If we knew which way we were going to vote.
Chester.
Well, the owner is out of the country, correct?
No, that's Ramada.
No, that's Ramada.
All right, never mind.
Would you like to close out this?
Yes. I would love to close it out.
On the motion?
Motion on the table is?
To reconsider, which meant you were taking it off of the table.
Correct.
Yes.
So you want to?
We have a second for that?
We have a second. Trustee Light.
Okay, with no further discussion, roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
No.
Trustee Pojek.
No.
Three, two.
On that motion that you don't need to vote, Mayor, it doesn't need four votes.
I'm not going to.
So what all that meant under Roberts' rules is that this ordinance is back before the board for any action you want to take, whether it be --
Right now?
Right now. A motion to table, a motion to approve, whichever to deny.
Trustee Meritato.
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the application for the text amendment.
But this ordinance is -- this ordinance is to deny the application of the text amendment.
That's the way he said it.
I thought he said to deny. Didn't Pat say to deny?
Yes, he did.
So what I'm saying is, if you want the ordinance to fail, you have to vote in favor. It has to be a motion in the positive. So if you remove the motion, I know what Trustee Meritato wants to do, so remove the motion in the second.
Make a motion to remove.
Just remove your motion in the second.
God, I'll never be able to transcribe this.
So the motion you want to make is in the affirmative.
Who's on first place?
You have to grant the motion, because that denies it. So there's a motion by Trustee Meritato to grant the ordinance, to approve it.
To grant.
And deny, which in fact denies the self-storage.
Correct.
Is there a second to that?
They would have no trucks on the property.
Second.
Are we done now?
You're there.
I hope so.
You're there.
Any further discussion?
No.
The motion on the floor is to approve the denial.
That's right, Mayor.
So if you want to deny it, you vote yes. If you don't want to deny it, you vote no.
That's correct, Mayor.
And now we'll have a roll call vote.
Thank you for that note, Mayor.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes. Yes.
Motion. Ordinance is approved. I do not have an ordinance number in here.
You don't need one. You don't need one here.
Which I'm assuming.
You don't need it. Because it's denied.
First one. Now the second. We now have a second companion motion, no?
Yeah, I don't think, Mary, we need a number.
That's fine.
Because it's denied, yeah.
Number two is an ordinance to deny an application for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles on the premises commonly known as 325 East Army Trail Road. outdoor storage of vehicles on the premises commonly known as 325 East Armory Trail Road in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Who wants to make a motion on this one? Trustee Sullivan.
So moved.
Second.
There's a first and second, if, to deny, which would, again, be an affirmative vote, if that's the way you're tending to go. Any further discussion?
This is the old Dominics now.
Yes.
Just want to make sure of that.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance to deny is, again, passed. Old business is not much good. New business. Clerk Schmidt, do you have the canvas of the results from the April 2nd, 2019 election for Glendale Heights?
Yes, I do.
Would you share that with us?
For Village of Glendale Heights, trustee District One. H. William Bill Schmidt, 95 votes. Edward R. Pope, 81 votes. Village of Glendale Heights, trustee District Three. Michael John Light, 118 votes. Village of Glendale Heights, village trustee, District Four, Pat Meritato, 80 votes. And now I get to swear them in.
Great. Would you like to swear in our three incumbent trustees?
Yes. If they would join me?
Bill, Mike, Pat.
I'm going to do them one at a time, they're pretty short. Good.
Okay.
One at a time.
One at a time, but you could all come down.
It works.
All come down.
All come down. Give each other moral support.
All right.
Your cheat sheet. Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Bill Schmidt.
I, Bill Schmidt.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee, District One.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee, District One.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee, District One.
Of the office of village trustee, District One.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Trustee Light. Cheat sheet.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming up for me tonight, right?
Yeah.
Would you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
And repeat after me. I, Michael J. Light.
I, Michael J. Light.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee, District Three.
Having been elected to the village, to the office of village trustee, District Three.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
The office of village trustee, District Three.
The office of village trustee, District Three.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Now, let's see how we do. Okay, Pat.
Pretty funny.
All the time.
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Pat Meritato.
I, Pat Meritato.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee, District Four.
Have been elected to the office of village trustee, District Four.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
The office of village trustee, District Four.
Of the office of the village trustee, District Four.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Bill, Mike, and Pat. We are glad you're still here. Before we break for cake to celebrate their reelection, we have one more thing to celebrate. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, mayor, village board.
Thank you.
I'll wait for Pat to get seated. Wrong chair.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, appreciate that.
I'm a little shook off from that talk. Got swearing in.
Mayor, village board, tonight, actually, I'm proud to bring up, for promotion, Chris Parsons and Greg Pearl, two of our patrolmen that are being promoted to sergeants tonight. Chris and Greg, if you guys can come up here. So. Come over here. Behind you is all of your officers, on duty, off duty, officers that you've worked with throughout the time of your career so far, here to support you. Officers, thank you very much for being here, sincerely appreciated, taking the, if you're not working, taking your time off. Two of our police commissioners are also here, Esther Wilk and Vic Macias, thank you very much for being here. Without you guys, this wouldn't be possible. Say your thanks. Rick Schwerner is not able to make it tonight. Back in the fall, we had a current sergeant's list that expired, and a police commission put on a sergeant exam that was pretty tough, two days, a lot of, a lot of reading, a lot of questions, a lot of panels and, and testing. And Chris and Greg finished one and two. They should be proud of all the work they put into it, they deserve to be promoted. I'm also very happy and proud to say that this is the first time, I think, in Glendale Heights history, that we're promoting to sergeant, two officers that attended Markcart Middle School and Glenbard East High School. Both have been residents of the town for a long time, and grew up here, and know the town well, and know many of the people that are still in town. So, Chris finished first, Chris is going to be badge number 244. Chris is here with his mom Donna, his father Lindsey, who's also one of our police chaplains, he's a deacon at St. Matt's Catholic Church, his brother Greg, and his brother Matt, if it's not already a family affair, Matt is in uniform and works for the police department. It said he's a, Markcart Middle School in town, Glenbard East, and he's a University of Illinois graduate with a major not in criminal justice. He was hired March 27th, 2006, as a patrol officer. He worked for, from 2011 through 2016, in our special operations unit, in detectives. Went back to patrol in January of 2016. Chris most recently completed 14 weeks at the police academy acting as a supervisor, and got a tremendous experience in how to supervise our new recruits, and all that goes along with that. He's been awarded 14 honorable mention awards, he's got one lifesaving award, he's an AIM Award winner in 2010 with having 25 DUIs just prior going into investigations. Chris is going to be a successful member of our support, of our sergeant staff and administration for a long time to come. So Chris is going to be badge number 244. Let me go through Greg, and then we'll do the swearing in, and the badge, and the pinning. Greg is going to be badge number 245. He's here with his wife Cindy, his kids Tyson and Tanya, who have been phenomenal for the last half hour. His aunt Denise, his brother Darcia, and his father-in-law David is here as well to help support him. I say he was at Markcart Middle School in town, and Glenbard East High School. He's got a bachelor's degree in administration of justice from Southern Illinois University. He was hired in, on June 12th, 2008. He went to investigations in 2013, and he was a partner with Chris as a special operations detective. In 2015, he was reassigned to Dumag, and he worked as a undercover drug officer, you're not going to be undercover anymore, so, undercover drug officer for three years, he recently came out in January of this year. Greg has nine honorable mentions in his short career, three and a half years at Dumag, and, and the one case that sticks out to me from Greg being at Dumag, he was a case agent on a very large seizure, 25 ecstasy pills, 120 grams of cannabis, 34 grams of cocaine, 31 Xanax pills, two guns, and $51,000 in currency. So, Greg has been a, rising through the ranks here very quickly, had a very successful career at Dumag, he's going to make a phenomenal sergeant, and he's going to be a great part of our staff and administration for years to come. They both have, you know, a short amount of time, 10, 11, 12 years, so they're going to be here for a long time as supervisors and part of the staff. So Greg is going to be badge number 245. So, sergeants, if you could just stand right here, Marie's going to swear you guys in.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Chris Parsons.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary sergeant of police.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary sergeant of police.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary sergeant of police to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary sergeant of police to the best of my ability. Mr. Parsons and Cindy, if you guys can come up here? If you couldn't tell, they were partners, I don't know how in sync they were with reading that.
Yep.
These kids are going to steal the show, mayor, they did steal the show.
They're big precious.
They stole the show.
That's amazing. Yeah, they did.
It's the first time I've seen Greg in uniform.
Really? I swear, man.
I'm taking a breath. Do they live in town?
No, I don't know.
Just get it closed, we'll fix it later.
We just discussed that.
Your official commission cards, that now actually makes it official. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, thank you. Mayor, board, and fellow officers, and family and friends who are here to see him, I present to you Sergeant Chris Parsons and Sergeant Greg Pearl. So you want to, you want to break now, mayor, or you want to?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready to break, thank you.
You have to call recess.
Recession.
This meeting is recessed. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wow, those kids were amazing.
Yes, they are.
Hold on tight.
Congratulations again.
They grow up way too fast.
I need you to sign.
I support Markcart East, too.
Oh, you are?
What?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Like to call this meeting bit to order? We need to, under new business, remove number four. And we're ready to go with number five, which is an ordinance approving and adopting an amendment to the Village of Glendale Heights Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map. That's from the April 18th, 2019 Committee of the Hall, and that is first reading. Number six, an ordinance to deny a conditional use to permit outside storage of semi-trucks and trailers at 780 East North Avenue in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's Vermont, and this is first reading. Is this, so we don't table this?
No.
Okay. Okay. I didn't think so. That was first reading. Number seven, an ordinance to amend Title IV, Chapter III of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That is the liquor license for Hard Rock's Gaming Cafe. And this is first reading. And that is it. We removed number four, which was the request to wait first reading. We now go back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's any one in public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, I think you want Committee of the Hall, which is right after, that'll just be another minute. A motion would, oh, that helps. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Board meeting is adjourned and Trustee Schmidt will be calling the Committee of the Hall meeting to order in just one second.
Also?
Also.
This meeting of the Committee of the Hall of Village of Glendale Heights for Thursday, May 2nd, 2019 is called to order. Court, please note who's present.
Noted.
Are there any additions to the items to be discussed? Okay, there being none. We'll open to public comment and we'll start off with any comment about the Venture One project, if somebody wishes to address the committee.
Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to come before this board, Committee, to express our concerns about the development of the Glendale property. I'd like to start out by bringing your attention.
Excuse me, what is your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Jack Ambrogio.
Jack?
Yes. A-M-B-R-O-G-I-O, 200 Lennox Court, Carroll Stream, Illinois. And I'm president of the Concord Point Homeowners Association, representing 325 units. I'd like to start out by pointing your attention to your zoning laws. And under zoning definition and purposes, I'm going to only read, read the last sentence of that first paragraph. It says, "Primary purpose to convene," and the primary purpose is to convene and promote the health, safety, general welfare of the people of the community by fixing reasonable standards to which buildings must conform. And the reason I want to start out with that is that when Glendale Heights took over that property, I won't go through the history, we all know it, you designated it as commercial development. It was originally residential, recreational when it was DuPage County, which is fine. It was a good choice. Your master plan map, I know, has changed over the years, but commercial property in that area is what it was designed for. It's within a thousand feet maybe of a major, one of your major shopping centers, Valley Foods. Makes sense for that zoning. You have over 100 permitted uses under that current zoning for that property. You have an additional 50-plus uses for special use permits for that property. I reviewed them all and I have them here, and you know them. There really is no objection that would ever come forth by us to object to any one of the developments or businesses listed in this list. Why would we? Because they all provide a service to the residents. Now this property is surrounded on three sides by residential units. These units have been there for over 20 years. People bought their units knowing that there was no warehouse behind it. People bought their units knowing what type of development was taking place along North Avenue. And in Glendale Heights or the non-corporate area, who could ever imagine a warehouse being plopped in the middle of a residential community? It's very hard to understand this. It's very hard to understand it even got this far. The safety in our community is utmost. 16 bays. That's a lot of trucks that could be coming out on a daily basis. 18 footers trying to turn onto President Street, which by the way, you have letters from the Village of Carroll Stream, they're not happy about that. And they object to this use also, should be in your files. But most importantly, these trucks, when they come out, will create two or three truck lanes just at the light to get onto North Avenue. One truck sits there, turns, the traffic backup on President Street, which isn't highly trafficked, it would be at least the Concord. Let alone trucks trying to turn into President Street to get into there. The light isn't long enough to even allow two cars to turn, let alone sit behind two or three semi-trailers, it'll take you five minutes to make that turn. The noise levels that this will bring, some of these trucks may be refrigerated trucks. They'll have, because we don't know what's going to go in there, these refrigerator trucks in the summer will be running 24 hours a day. You'll hear those compressors going. The buildings that back up to this project, which are Concord Points Buildings as well as Polo Club, would hear this. It'd be in their bedrooms, they couldn't sleep at night, the noise levels would be there, because it would echo throughout the night. Our property values, though the zoning board says, "It's not going to affect it." Give me a break. Imagine your homes having put behind it a three-story warehouse and tell me your vapoury value is going to remain the same. It just isn't. Then we come to our roadways. These trucks, if they're allowed to get onto President Street and see a backup, are going to turn and go down to Concord and Concord over the North Avenue exit, or they'll take the route down to St. Charles Road. This is a very big concern because we have children that ride their bikes on the sidewalks. We have a park within, I'd say 500 feet of this driveway. Where our kids play and they go across back and forth and use the park. And this will be a dangerous situation. School bus traffic, that's another one. How many times have you seen truck drivers being very impatient? We have a lot of school bus traffic in Concord Point and Polo Club. Our community is a mixture of young and old, and I'm one of the old ones. And, you know, I stand here before you, I remember when, back in the day, when Glendale Heights started out of a ranch home on top of a hill here. And look what you have now, beautiful facility. And that was accomplished through planning. And your plan calls for commercial development. And we would never stand in the way of that. But we are objecting vigorously to the use of changing it to an industrial zone. Why? What benefit could there possibly be to have a warehouse at this location? What benefit is it to Glendale Heights and what benefit is to the neighbors surrounding it? I can't think of one. But I look at your list of 100 to 150 uses under this thing, every one of them is a valid use and an amenity, an amenity to the residents of the area. A warehouse isn't an amenity. I'd also like to bring up that they do not know what's going in there. The developer says, "Well, maybe a carpet company and they'll store their carpets there and they'll pull in for retail use." Give me a break. Give me a break. Are you going to allow the signage out there for four or five businesses along North Avenue? I don't think so. Who's going to think it's a retail development when it stands three-story high, three stories high in this warehouse? It doesn't make sense. The whole project doesn't make sense. We ask you to explain to us why this would be a fantastic use of this property, over all 150 uses. Please, explain to us why this is so important to have. What big benefits is this is going to bring? How about a sports center? I said, at the zoning committee, how about a Chuck E. Cheese? How about a medical building? These are good uses. No objection. Why? It's an amenity. So I plead with you to consider and answer our question. Why would this trump 150 uses of good use for the property, non-objectible use of the property? So I thank you for your time and I hope you give us the consideration, I know you will, and be good neighbors. Because we want to be your good neighbor, too. Thank you.
Are there any other, anybody else wish to address the committee?
Phil?
Phil?
I got a question.
Got a question. Bell real quick.
Let the residents keep, let them stay. Because then you might want to respond numerous times.
I'm Ryan Archer. My address is 107 Andover Drive, Glendale Heights. I'm a board member of the Polo Club Point Association and I represent the 94 owners and residents of your community, also adjacent to this Venture One property. I'm not going to rehash what Jack said, you know, no, I would say friend Jack. He hit all the highlights. I can say standing before you that I know I represent our, our members by echoing all those. We are worried about lower property values, noise pollution, light pollution, all of the standard things that would come from putting an industrial building next to a residential zone. On top of the fact that, and I think we mentioned at the planning and commission meeting, that our streets are also private. Any additional overflow traffic, should they miss the entrance, is going to potentially go through our community and wear and tear maintenance is strictly borne by our residents. I, I think being at the planning and commission meeting, listening to owners for about two hours, you know, express their desires and their objections to this development, and I want to stress, we're not against progress. We are for it. You know, we are just against this specific use of this property and changing the adjacent property to accept the use of this development. Is, I know the planning, commissioning commissioner mentioned, he, you know, and I'm paraphrasing, but through a long statement said, "You can't stop progress." He may be right. But all I can say is that I will be here during this process until the end. I will pay attention to all of you vote and I will report back to my membership, how you all vote on this issue. All we ask is for your consideration. I can say that, you know, similar to Jack had, you know, when I had bought my property back in 2000 when it was new development, had there been an adjacent industrial warehouse next to it, I would have looked elsewhere. And I think a lot of people would do the same. And if it, if it is built and it comes time for me to sell my place, I think a lot of people will do the same as well. And that's all I have to add for it right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody else? Sir?
Thank you for allowing me to come and present my concerns. My name is Mark Peckman. I live on Concord Lane, which is adjacent to present, between St. Charles Road and North Avenue. I see this basically as an issue to harm Carroll Stream residents and as a loss of goodwill between our communities. I have concerns and a proposal. My concerns are about the probable negative financial impact and environmental impact on Carroll Stream property owners and their residents close to this particular venue. Property owners have a right to protect their investments. The warehouse is completely surrounded by residents, is not only cheap in the aesthetics, but it also, the property values will be negative greatly and impacted greatly. Why we, we want to rent and buy property located near high-volume truck traffic. All residents have a right to a peaceful and safe environment. We will be bombarded with truck traffic, noise, as Jack said. Goodwill between the communities is harmed from these effects. I propose that Glendale Heights change the decision, if they haven't made it up yet, about his, this warehouse. There are plenty of empty warehouses along North Avenue and I'm not sure where property value, where the property, Glendale Heights property is in, adjacent to these North Avenue warehouses, but from roughly County Farm Road to Swift Road, there's a myriad of warehouses on the north side of North Avenue. And many of these warehouses are looking for leases that are not being rented. And there's a lot of them there that are open. So that's, that's the reason I'm saying that why, and these warehouses, there's no residential areas to interfere with the, the traffic and the volume of business that goes on in that area. What I'd like to propose is that Glendale Heights change their decision about the warehouse. There, as I say, there are plenty of warehouses. We propose that Glendale Heights rezone this land for homes and, and benefit the tax revenue. This will maintain our property values and provide peace and goodwill between our communities. And I think it speaks loud for what we're looking for and I thank you for your time.
Okay, anybody else? Now does anybody have anything other?
The last stridler here. My name is Denise Brabeck. Sorry. I live on Brampton Court in Concord. And I just want to say I have concerns about this as well. I wasn't here for the meeting last week. I have a lot of questions. I don't, is the developer here? Are you going to speak? Okay, because I, I mean, I just mirror everyone else. I'm just concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Peterstelly. My firm, Covet, Schiffer, and Nessbit, represents the Concord Point Condominium Association. We had drafted a letter to Michael Kroll Community Development regarding the association's concern with the new development. As previously indicated, you know, there's decreased property tax values, nighttime activities, a building that is more or less gargantuan in comparison to everything else that's around it. And you, you just run into a whole slew of issues that comes along with that, a very much so big presence in an otherwise calm community. What's already been touched on is the constant truck traffic throughout the neighborhood, too close for comfort to the residential communities. And something that's also, I think, worth noting is that this is an obvious concern within this community, given the previous conversations in the board meeting earlier, where there was discussion of whether or not to allow trucks behind, I think it was Home Depot and another area as well. So it's definitely something that's of concern to the community and I think something that should definitely be considered in evaluating whether or not to move forward with this particular project. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody wish to address the committee on any other issues? Okay. Well. We'll get to that. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator to approve assigned variance to Section 1, I'm sorry, Section 11-6-11D for. to section one, I'm sorry, section 11-6-11D for A to increase the maximum number of wall signs per business establishment from one to four at 196 Exchange Boulevard, and that's four sub zero. Trustee Sullivan?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that will be moved to the board. Now we have a, from the zoning administrator, a recommendation to approve various signed variances at 199 East North Avenue, that's for Burger King. Trustee Light?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we have the committee recommendations from the plan commission. And I think this would be an appropriate time for the developer to do a presentation.
My name is Mark Good. I'm a principal with Venture One Real Estate.
Ryan Stoller, also principal with Venture One Real Estate.
What we'd like to do is just give you a brief overview of the building and the site plan, so you can get an understanding of how we've tried to address some of the comments that were made earlier. This building, which will front on North Avenue and face North Avenue, we designed it with a significant amount of glazing in the front of the building where the offices would go. It's, in our opinion, it's higher than most buildings that we build in the region to provide an aesthetic value on North Avenue that we think is appropriate for this area and for your community. The building itself, I know it might be hard to see that, but someone mentioned that the trucks on Presidents. We specifically designed this facility in working with IDOT to have the trucks enter the site on the furthest east of the property from Presidents on the south side of North Avenue. If you can see that drive coming in on the furthest east. And the trucks would then come to the back of the property and that area, in the back of the property would be where the truck docks would be located for servicing, we believe up to four different units within the building. In the front of the building would be all the automobile parking and in working with IDOT, we created a separate entrance for the automobiles to come into the property, pretty much, you know, in the center-left of the property, so that the cars could leave out of the furthest east drive where the trucks are going, but they also have an option to come into that area. Regarding Presidents, we have indicated that we are absolutely fine with having signs put up, directional signs, both on North Avenue and on Presidents, saying that on Presidents, there's no trucks, and trying to show a directional signage on the front edge on North Avenue that the truck entrance is on the east side of the property. So it is not our intent nor our thought to have trucks come down Presidents Avenue. That's just not part of our plan. One of the things we'd like to point out is that we were very, and this is really hard to read, but let's get a close-up. One of the things that we'd like to point out is that we're very sensitive to setbacks. And so if we can go to the setback area here, we, in working with the village and looking at your setback regulations, we designed this to, I'll just get it here because I can't read that up there with my glasses. On North Avenue, the current setback for zoning of C2 is 70 feet. On our proposed site, we're going to be at a setback of 120 feet, far exceeding that. To the south, under the current zoning, the setback could be on the southeast and west, 20 feet for building setbacks. To the south end side of our property, we're at 225 feet. To the east are 86 feet. And to the west, we're 84 feet, far exceeding the current zoning under C2 and also far exceeding the zoning that's proposed for BP Business Park. And we are, the height of the building at 38 feet is well below the proposed zoning in the BP Business Park of 75 feet. What we want to point out is that, you know, we were very sensitive to the neighbors, so we did a little research. And if we can go back to the one slide that shows the setbacks, it might be really hard to read, but I'll point it out. Where you have Glendale Heights on the east side of the street. This is on Schmollie Road. Residential in Glendale Heights is on the east side of the road and then Carroll Streams Industrial is on the west side. A lot of the buildings along Schmollie, they are set back approximately 190 feet, including the road from the residential in Glendale Heights. So, you know, from our perspective, when we set up our setback at 225 feet, we're actually exceeding the setbacks that exist on Schmollie Road where the two communities come together. The difference is, is that between the homes that are south of us in Carroll Stream, instead of having a road behind them, they're actually going to have landscaping, a detention pond, and then there'll be an area for the truck parking, but there's not a road there. So we've actually exceeded that setback that exists where there is in this area residential and industrial coming together. So from our perspective, we've looked at this and tried to make this as viable a site as possible, taking into account landscaping, fencing, setbacks, to work well with the neighbors for this building that we're thinking about building. And we're happy to answer any questions from the board.
Mike?
Julian, I just wanted to clarify. In Jack's statement when he was talking, he had stated that this property was going to be zoned industrial. That is incorrect.
You're right, it's incorrect. I want to make sure that we're making, saying it correctly.
Yes.
The proposed zoning is BP. It is not industrial.
That would be Business Park District.
Correct.
And that wouldn't entail any heavy manufacturing or large equipment?
Correct. No heavy manufacturing, no outside storage of trucks.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, committee, plan commission has recommended approval to zone eight parcels of land, four from the C2 Community Commercial District and four from the Agricultural and Estate District to BP Business Park District for the property located at 1 East North Avenue, located at the southeast corner of North Avenue and President Street. I have a motion. Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that will go to the board. Second item from the plan commission, a recommendation to approve an application for a plat of re-subdivision to consolidate the properties from eight parcels of land onto one parcel of land located at the southeast corner of North Avenue and President Street. Trustee Light?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that will go to the board. Number three from the plan commission, a recommendation to approve an application to obtain a conditional use for a planned unit development, including two deviations from the village's zoning ordinance for the property located at 1 East North Avenue, located at the southeast corner of North Avenue and President Street. Trustee Pojak?
Move it to the board with recommendation.
Second.
On which recommendation, sir?
Chester.
Chester?
Clarified recommendation.
Recommendation? To concur.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that will go to the board. Now we have some discussion regarding Salt Creek Barbecue Underground Stormwater Storage Project.
That would be me.
That would be you.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt. We are looking for direction from the board to proceed to issue a letter of intent to Earthworks Land Improvement for the development of an underwater stormwater, excuse me, an underground stormwater detention project that would take place at the old Salt Creek Barbecue at, in the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza, excuse me, on North Avenue, near Glen Island Road. This is ongoing flood mitigation project that Public Works has undertaken for some time and this is an extension of that. We had bids come in on April 23rd. Sebel, our village engineer, has vetted these bids and determined that Earthworks is the lowest, most responsible bidder at $837, excuse me, $837,000.
Oh, rich.
$374,000. Sorry, that would have been way too good to be true, which is lower than the engineer's estimate and also is within the budget that we have approved in the TIF One Fund. We are also receiving a $400,000 CDBG block grant in order to help pay for this funding, this money, this project. And so in order to speed the project along, and we'll be bringing back a formal ordinance on May 16th, but in order to speed the project along and get it completed before September 6th, so the construction can go in concurrence with Freddie's frozen custard and steak burgers, which would be on the lot right next door, we'd like to issue a letter of intent to start shop drawings with Earthworks and then we can come back on the 16th for the board to formally approve the contract and award the bid. But we're just looking for your direction to be able to move.
Okay.
Not by meeting.
Mike?
Can't look at me.
How does this fit in, Rachel, with the state's intent to take care of their flood water problems at that area too?
It's not really related. The swale issue will be addressed by them, which is part of the runoff from the North Avenue.
Okay, but nothing we would be doing here would interfere with that?
No, we've made it clear that that water come on North Avenue can't go into the parking lot and become part of our drainage system. They're very clear about that. They know they need to address that themselves.
Is there any chance of getting them to address that at the same time as we're doing?
We're trying to. We had the hydraulic engineer out there two or three weeks ago and they are looking at it.
The reason that I asked that...
Rachel, can you speak, I'm sorry. I just wanted her also to speak to what type of flooding this will alleviate, you know, the 100-year versus the 5, 10, 100-year floods.
For this particular project?
For this part project. I wanted to just make sure everybody's aware that this is not going to alleviate...
This is not going to alleviate the 100-year storm events. This is to alleviate the very frequent events, the two, five-year events, rainwater. So it wouldn't completely eradicate flooding from this area.
Okay. I was just hoping to have the two projects coordinated so that there's the minimum disruption to the shopping center during that time.
My understanding is that when the state re-expanded North Avenue is when the piping was, could have been better, correct?
I think, are you talking about the flooding in this whale?
Correct.
Yeah, they think that there was either a catch basin there that's been buried or that they need a new catch basin to connect to the storm sewer that crosses North Avenue. But either those things aren't directly connected to our project. It's the drainage of the swale that needs to be addressed.
Okay, in my mind, I see water and water and...
Yeah.
Together.
Right.
Okay. Trustee Pojak?
How long will this project take? A month, two months?
The completion date that we've put in the contract is September 6th this year. So the ideal project length would be completed by September 6th.
It'll start on May 16th?
Well, we'd like to get your permission to issue the letter of intent that we, so that we can have Earthworks start with their shop drawings and so forth, some of the preliminary things, just to start moving this project along.
Trustee Light?
Mike, how is this, I mean, I know we're talking about the steak burger, are they, any letter of intent of them starting or anything, a date?
I'll let Joanne handle that.
Okay, give it to me.
Very happy to announce that we got their permit fee today, so we will be issuing the permit tomorrow. They are going to be starting next week. We have the pre-construction meeting.
And this project, it's not going to bother what they're building?
That's part of the reason we want to move this forward is that they are, we've been working with them, Rachel and Andy Pouffant and Mike and I, to make sure that our project doesn't interfere. So the engineers are coordinating and they were very concerned that they were going to be up and running and ours was going to be under construction. So this will help to have ours done before they open, so it can be a smooth transition. And they're very happy with everything the village has been trying to do.
Good, all right, thank you.
Trustee Maritaro?
Rachel, did they say what they had to do there?
They're not sure if they've buried the existing catch basin or whether they'd have to put a new one in and connect it to the large pipe crossing North Avenue. The hydraulic engineer was out there along with the maintenance crews and they said they were going to investigate it and get back to us.
Was that the guy from Naperville or Schaumburg?
No, it was from Schaumburg.
You know his name because, I mean, that's all they got to do is put a pipe in there.
I think it's a structure.
And connect it to the sewer system.
Yeah, they need to put a structure in there, but they think it's either one that was there before and has been buried. So they weren't, wanted to do something straight away, they wanted to look into it. But they did commit to doing it.
Because I like to, like Bill said, I like to get that fixed.
Right. We can certainly follow up with them.
I know how IDOT is, I know how long it takes them to do something.
No.
I'll certainly follow up with them this week and see what progress has been made.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions?
No, I think we should get...
So you would like a motion from us to authorize...
The letter of intent, yeah, I would sign that one, yes, to proceed with the drawings.
Trustee Sullivan?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, got your permission?
Thank you.
Okay, any other items to be discussed? Trustee Mer...
I got one quick question for Doug. How are you doing with the buses, with the school buses?
An email was put out to all the supervisors this morning to have officers be on the, be there at, you know, 6:55 tomorrow morning. Check and see that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question for the chief also. Doug, when I was leaving Blackhawk today after their graduation, there's a huge sign, "No right turn." You'd be surprised how many cars were coming out of that lot and turning right to the Army Railroad.
The sign that's on Blackhawk property?
Yes. I mean, it's a big sign, you can't miss it.
I would have to check our ordinance and make sure it's our sign and not their sign and that we can actually enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing further, would somebody like to make a Chester?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?